And deal with with hazards. So there was 24. And now through this plan, what I'm doing is I'm going through and I'm ranking how well we did. And updating how we how we dealt with those 24 initiatives. And to be honest, we did really well because our big issues are flooding and severe storms. And we've got $100 million levy that's addressing huge problems. We got pump stations that we're dealing with. We got 200 million yards of infrastructure that we've done in grants. So we have really hit it hard at identifying and mitigating those types of. Now, you know, we got the bridge North Aberdeen that will deal with the seismic there one way or the other. Whether it's a retrofit or a rebuild, it'll deal with the seismic. There's a lot of good things. The police department has got one of their number one initiatives was to get a mobile command center, something that was out of the inundation zone so that they could have, you know, and they've got a big truck from Kolo, I think, and they're outfitting that. So they have the ability. So we've done a really good job addressing our initiatives. Now we're going through and we're creating new initiatives. And a lot of that had to do with also with the plans that we that we put together, the land use plan and the water cop plan and the waste wire cop plan. And all the flooding ordinance and all those have been updated in the last four years, bringing forward all the new standards and mandates. And we haven't liked them all, but we don't get to decide that. We implement what they tell us we have to implement. So. Answer your question.
Thank you.
And when we when we're done, we're going to have we're going to roll out the final plan. That was part of our responsibility to the county was to roll that out. And with our annex and also with, we're not going to print that out. It's it's really a three inch binder. But but we'll have that available online and we'll have our annex printed out. So everybody can see where our capabilities assessment was and what our what our issues are and what we're trying to accomplish.
Will that be a 2024 deliverable?
Which the plan?
Yeah.
And what's gonna my annex will be to the county with the before the end of the week, before the weekend. They will review it, put it all together. So the annex will probably be ready for review in a week or so. And then they're going to put it in with their major plan. And then they'll roll out the whole plan in probably two or three weeks. So so it'll be before the end of the year.
Just a question on the vulnerability risk on slide 15. Is that like blended from the chart that's prior, like based off of probability magnitude extent or time?
So that 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 Excel sheet that we we use there, that's that would provide it to us. So they 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 assign numbers to the severity. And but we decide what the severity is. So like a like an earthquake, you know, it plays into how quickly do you, you know, what's what's the warming time? What's the loss of life possibility, those types of things? And like the category or probability?
So it's like averaging.
How likely is it going to happen?
I see.
And that is likely or unlikely low probable medium likely high or highly likely very high. So we go through and we look at our city and what we anticipate the risks to be for each one of those. And what how likely is it that it's going to flood? Well, very likely.
Yeah.
So that and they've already signed numbers to those. So those go into the matrix. And at the end, it spits out a composite number that tells you what's your biggest concern, considering all the factors that we already agreed were important. Somewhat the same that we've done under a number of matrices where we've looked at hard problems trying to end that that nobody's going to be happy with trying to get a grasp of what's the best option for the city. You know, knowing that it's not going to please every every individual or every group. So.
Does FEMA look at this and say, well, their score has gone up or their score has gone down?
Our scores, for the most part, went down on our highs. We didn't have any very highs. We had highs, and I think that was more based on the group that was doing the rating ranking. The last I was on the last group as well, but it was, you know, Tom Hubbard and I don't think it might have been a shoe made Steve Shoemane. And, you know, people have different preferences and priorities and I don't, you know, that's the whole point is that it's only your consistent and you don't have any prejudices. The matrix kind of makes it work out to if you're going to if we're going to consistently grade things low, then we graded everything low. You know, there wasn't really a way to skew it so that, I mean, I mean, if you try it, I guess you could skew it. But there's really no no reason to. Yes, yeah.
So I'm not seeing any other questions. I'd like to offer a comment. And our staff is always so positive and informative and answers our questions. But it's really hard to overstate the enormity of what our staff is willing to take on to mitigate these risks to the life and safety of our citizens. And as we decide how many potholes we can spend time filling, we need to remember that they they're trying to complete our commitment on hundreds of millions of dollars to mitigate some serious risks. And so for a few years now, for the next few years, that it's all hands on deck. Well, they implement these grants, they've gone out and gotten to make our community safer when it comes to severe events. And so thank you, Director Sander, for being positive. And I just hope going forward that we all keep in mind the enormity of what our city staff has taken under. So thanks.
Thank you, Dan. And to add to that is we have been really successful at grants. And we are suffering from it. And City Engineer is going to come and give you a presentation first of the year that is going to be horrible because he's going to roll out a presentation with all of our current projects. So so you all understand where we're at. And it's 128. So we're dealing with 120 projects and over $200 million with our grant money. Well, not just grants, but also state set of sites and, you know, appropriation. So there's a lot, a lot going on and, you know, forgive him when he really does take an hour. Anybody else? The audience have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I really commend our staff as well because there's a lot going on with this and it's there's a lot of it that you're just looking at statistics and numbers and giving it your best shot on interpreting them. And it is all being done to make our community safer and to try to be prepared should there be some sort of catastrophe. So job well done. Thank you. Moving on to Mayor's report. Oh, well, since last we met, we had Thanksgiving and hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. We had pretty traditional turkey and all the fixins. Great time with family. Also met with Tacoma Power and we talked about the One Eji Dam and what their plans are. And we had a lot of questions. There's a lot of answers up in the air that we hope to meet with them soon again and get some of those answers about what the plans are for the future of the One Eji Dam. Met with the library. We discussed their project for remodel. I threw in a couple of extras hoping that the remodel project would pay for repainting the artwork on the side of the building where the parking lot is for the library as well as repairing and replacing the electrical in the ground where the art is out on the corner. There's two lights in the ground that shine up on that star or sun sunburst. And they've been out for a long time. So they're they're beyond use, right? They're all rotted away. So hopefully the project all pay for all that as well. We also talked about the problems the library's been having with the public restroom. And the library seemed very positive about partnering with the city on a on another Portland Lou. So we could be talking a total of three Portland Lou's for our downtown, which would be awesome. What else? La May's, we kind of went back and forth with the contract, fix this, fix that little things here and there. So right now it's just pretty much finishing up review in our legal department. And I think we're about there to to sign the new garbage contract. Met with the Quinalt Nation again about alignment with the levy project by the Qmart. And there's still a lot up in the air on that, on how we're going to proceed. But it's been good meetings because it's important to build some good relationships with the Quinalt Nation and work together to solve the issues there. So we're working forward there. And then, of course, we worked on the budget and we'll get to that a little bit later. That's about, I think that's about it since Turkey Day. Lots of football. Okay, moving on to council reports. Anyone on the council have anything? Do you none? Moving on to staff reports. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Like Mayor had stated, we did meet with Timberland Regional Library. We also met with Eric Potts from the Grace Harbor Community Foundation to sort out there is funding available to work on capital projects. So that means the remodel and other projects, the other projects that Mayor Shave had spoken about. So we figured out to find Um, so we figured out the financial processes that will involve like approval from the library board and the city council in order for us to use the funding that's available for that. Again, that's not any money that the city will be. That is all money that was donated from the Shirk Foundation. There's also uh, Weatherwax Foundation money there as well, but that goes towards like more programming. So um, Lisa Scott, Director Lisa Scott has been assigned to oversee and manage um, and be the city liaison um, uh, uh, when it comes to the library remodel. So if you have any questions about the remodel, you can direct them towards her. Um, and then so that is where we are with that. And like you said, um, we had that. And then yesterday we had a um, we invited the State Auditor's Office, the Division of Government Innovation to deliver a training to the directors and then also to all of the managers and supervisors and leads. Um, this is kind of uh, the direction that we're heading operationally to change the culture here at um, the city. And I think we had some pretty positive outcomes. Um, it's a lot of team building. So that was the first. And so we will re- we will invite them back again in January to deliver lean training, which is a principle which will help the city kind of look at its processes so that it can trim wherever it can, whether it's processes, money, whatever it is that we're doing. We just need to be able to do the things that we do more effectively and more efficiently. So um, they're going to just kind of work with us to teach us those principles and how that works. Um, and then I also attended this morning, this this afternoon's AWC Legislative Session Preview. Um, I can send links if any of you are interested in learning what the legislative priorities are for AWC. I think the city will have some priorities for um, as well that we may want to advocate legislatively, um, especially regarding homelessness. So um, that's something for us to also consider. The only thing that we, one of the important things that we have is we have a meeting, um, uh, Rick Sanger, Director Sanger and um, City Engineer Nick Bird and I have um, an introductory meeting with Senator Cantwell's brand new uh, regional representative. Uh, so uh, so we'll just kind of introduce the projects that we have going on. Um, and just kind of let them know what our legislative um, asks are and have been in the past and just kind of catch them up to speed. And so hopefully we'll plan another meeting in the future. So are there any questions? Oh, and tomorrow the mayor and I will be um, taking a tour of the Wayne Uchi Dam. Uh, for those of you who don't know, the city owns the Wayne Uchi Dam. And so um, we will be taking a tour. I've never been up that way. So I'm really excited to check it out. So thank you.
I've been working on the city administrator to get her all prepped for this by telling her to wear her hip boots and bring her snorkel and stuff so we could go down inside the dam. Okay, any directors have any reports for tonight? All right.
Oh, I actually had one more. I apologize.
I I'm so sorry. I did have one other um, thing I wanted to report on. Um, uh, Director Stacy Barnum applied to be on the uh, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Local Parks Advisory Committee. Um, that's an RCO. That's the that's one of the places that we apply for grants. So this committee makes decisions on grants. So it's very, very great that she has been placed on this committee. Um, that shows visibility for the city of Aberdeen. It also shows that now we have we have someone there to advocate for us when we're, you know, someone there to make decisions and to kind of give the city kind of a a boost that way. So I want to congratulate uh, Director Barnum and her her uh, appointment.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, moving on to requests for council action. Finance Department. Who's overseeing finance tonight?
That would be me.
Okay.
Yes, um, got a both late end of us here. It's important work. Um, following up on um, um, re- a revision of the budget that council asked staff to undertake. And um, I understand staff got a few questions which they answered and um, so tonight we're looking at um, hopefully uh, well, the third reading and final passage of Bill twenty three dash one six. An ordinance adopting the preliminary twenty twenty four budget. I move we approve this report.
The third reading.
The third reading. Okay.
Most of us made the second to approve the third reading of the twenty twenty four preliminary budget. Any discussion?
Yes.
Under discussion.
Oh, Josh. Um, so I want to commend Steph. Um, all of you um, who really worked hard to um, make this leaner and get us further on the path to having a budget that um, where we're working within our means. And this represents a ton of progress and um, and we're with this budget, we will be starting twenty twenty four in a very strong position. Um, not that more work will need to be done, but um, but this is a really important step. So thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
To Josh first?
Yeah, sure. I'll go first. Uh, just to clarify, there is a hundred and twenty five thousand for the in Portland Lou or is?
That's what we would be cutting. Yeah. The original request was for two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, our hope is that what we're planning to do is to work, we did already speak with CAP. It sounded like a positive conversation. We would like to hold them to it, that they would like to split one with us. And then in talking with the library, I think we have some ways because this could be a Lou that we put in front of the library. There is a possibility we can try to work something out with the library. Not just the light Timberland Regional Library, but also with the Shirk Fund. So we're gonna play around a little bit with it, but that's how much we have to work with at this point.
Well, I have questions. So has option four that we were presented with that's already been put in to budget?
Yes, um, staff incorporated that after our last reading.
So if we pass it tonight as a final version of the proposed budget, that would include these cuts?
Yes.
Okay. I have some concerns about some of these cuts. Can you at least voice my my concerns?
Sure.
Um, you're both fire and police. You're recommending cutting overtime. And I want to know how you think you could do that. I mean, that's such, in both departments, that's just such a they don't know what's going to happen and especially being short staffed, that runs into overtime situations. So if we cut their budget, isn't that going to just end up with supplementals at the end of the year?
The goal is to just reduce the overtime. At the time that we were doing this, fire was fully staffed. And so we've experienced something uh, different now where we're in a different place now. So um, that was the goal is that they were fully staffed, but the request was for a higher amount. Now for police, um, that was something that the the police chief had put forward as a way to show, you know, enact a goodwill, like to show that he was making an effort to find places that he could cut in order to satisfy the request of the council.
Okay. And I spoke with or I communicated with Director Barnum about the parks thing. Then the other thing that I'm concerned about is the Portland Lou. Those are desperately needed in our downtown area. And I don't want to see those cuts. And I know you're working on some alternatives. But what if those alternatives don't come through? Then we're left with nothing. I can't.
Our goal right now and Director Barnum is working on it is to actually lease them. Um, so we hopefully won't spend a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars at all. Well, hopefully it'll be less than that to test pilot it. We may find that the Portland Lou's aren't a good fit for our city and that it they create more issues than not. So by having that lease option, then we would be able to back out of it. So that is the goal. It sounds very positive that we're headed in that direction with them, that we would actually be the first city in the nation to lease these things. So um, yeah, that's the that's the ultimate goal is to lease them as opposed to purchasing them outright.
Okay. And one final thing, there's two items that have been said takeout of the armory reserves. One's for the fire department, one's for the police department. So by passing this budget, is that going to happen or does that need to be a separate? You know?
No, that will happen.
That will happen. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Question was along the same lines as Councilmember Ross, but what what what's the justification for pulling those out of armory reserves? And then is there a strategy for using armory reserves in the future to help fulfill the budget?
If I could answer that, um, so this, the recommendation from Tara, our acting finance person, was that the it would be an appropriate use of the armory reserves to um, for one-time expenses like such as the chassis for the fire department and um, a much needed police vehicle. Um, and then we actually do need to create a policy for how we will um, how we will uh, manage those reserves going forward. And City Administrator Clemens has said on her to-do list.
Anyone else? Go go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I see that we removed the home shelter from that.
It's not being cut.
You gotta look at these numbers as being like negative.
Yeah.
They can come in the bottom totals how much we're saving off the budget.
Oh, okay. Okay, as long as that's in there, then we can.
These are all induction.
Two hundred thousand.
Hey, any other questions? Councilmember Shaw?
So um, I'm I I support the proposal, but just one slight um, disagreement with the use of the armory funds. I think um, the mayor said it pretty well when he presented the budget that the replacement of police vehicles is not a capital expense. It's an ongoing responsibility of the general fund. The chassis for the fire department to replace that one billion dollar vehicle is probably older than my son, who's a school teacher now, is a capital expense, not the ongoing reserve. Um, you know, vehicle replacement. So I think um, you know, a one-time agreement to, you know, replace police vehicles with armory reserves is probably okay, but it shouldn't be considered an ongoing capital expense because it's not. And um, the only other thing that I'd add is that um, in reviewing, um, I was out of my email for a week. I'm sorry. It took me a while to get back in. We have a really good security system of this thing. But um, I would just add that the um, staffing list that what part of the budget that we're adopting includes the authorized staffing for twenty three, twenty four. And I just bring to the council's attention that the staffing list as presented in the budget tonight is not exactly what is planned for community development next year and in January or February. There will be a revision coming forward probably on how to reorganize that when it comes to code enforcement. So.
I mean, speaking with um, Director Smith, um, our HR director, um, we talked about this a little bit and we have a an anticipated retirement coming up in community development. And that is anticipated for June. So what is anticipated is that we will bring forward um, a different position. So a revision of that, the FTE count. So then it will look, it so it will look different, but it will be less. It it will be a position that we will be lowering, I guess. I don't I don't know how to phrase that, but we'd be changing the position so that it's no longer this higher level position. Um, so it yes, it will be coming to you in in June or when the retirement refers.
Any other questions? Do you none? City Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Yes. Francie?
Yes.
Gaykin?
Yes.
Catman?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six seven zero seven.
Thank you. Wow, the third reading of our budget has passed. It is still November. Exactly. That's awesome.
Good job, staff. And that's it for finding.
Thank you. Public Safety Chair Report by Councilmember Ross. Okay. Public Works Chair Report by Councilmember Shaw.
There's nothing from Public Works tonight, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we don't have any special committee items today. I'm going to move to public comments. Anyone from the public want to comment on anything? Could could come up to the podium, identify yourself. Try to keep it around three minutes.
Al Smith, Wishville Valley. Question to the council. Has any movement been made on a new police station and fire vault?
In all sense?
Yeah. Go ahead. I know it's a surprise, but it's all.
Oh, no, no, no. It's okay. Um, you know, we were waiting for the RFA. Um, that was one of the the RFA um, was happening earlier this year. So we were kind of waiting to find out what that was, how that was going to end up. Um, so at this point, um, since the RFA didn't pass, I've continued the conversation with both Chief Green and Chief Golding. Um, to determine, right now, we're kind of in a visioning phase. Our fire department has already conducted like a design phase. And so they have a phase, they have a design that has already been drafted, but it's um, it's a little bit out of what the city can afford at this point. And so we've already like, we're already kind of in discussions right now as to how we want this to look. Do we want to build um, three different stations? Do we want to build, you know, a public safety campus? So right now we're just trying to revisit it and what it could potentially look like in the future. This is a long-term project we're going to be working on. We have a lot, we our focus right now with the city is on the levy. And the rail separation project and the North Aberdeen Bridge. But we are still working on it in a more informal, just kind of visioning process right now, if that makes sense.
My second question is, I was under the understanding years ago that we have sold our share in the Wayne Uchi Dam. Now, if I heard right tonight, that is our dam, city of Aberdeen. Am I correct?
That is correct. We have a co-license with the city of Tacoma. Um, that is due for renewal in twenty thirty seven. So um, yeah, we do. We do what the city does on the dam.
So if we have ownership in that facility, are we preferential in power acquisition? That's because the BPAs is set up.
We own the dam, but we have no, um, we don't operate the dam. We don't run the dam. We don't have any authority of the dam. So you're right, we tried to sell it to the city Tacoma, Tacoma Power. And that was in nineteen ninety one, we had we had an agreement. Um, and we bought it from the Army Corps. We tried this, we tried, first we tried to partner with Tacoma. They were going to run the hydroelectric. We had the dam. It ended up being such a drain on the city's finances based on the O and M of having twenty people up there that the Army Corps was running. We got out of the dam. There was a an agreement that put together in ninety five that would allow Tacoma to buy the dam. And if they couldn't finalize the dam, that they would keep it and And if they couldn't finalize the dam, that they would keep it and run it until the FERC license expired, which was, you know, at the time, that was in, in 97. So it expired in, in 2037. We amended that and extended that agreement five, four times to try and get them to that, to agree to take the dam. They never would because the Department of Ecology puts such requirements or restrictions on running that power plant. They can't be profitable. They can't run the hydroelectric more than about 50% of the time based on water temperature, water level. It doesn't affect our water rights at the Wainute intake down by Wainute Wildwood, that's for our industrial water. But, but we have, the water rights are in conflict. So the one that they have for retaining water at the dam and the one that we have for drawing water at, at the intake are conflicting and competing against each other. And we have a stronger water right, so we can always take water and they have to discharge water. And, and also Ecology is making them hold 100 feet as a, I think it's 100 feet, as a, as a buffer. It might be, it might be 30 now, I'm thinking about. But they have, they have to hold a reserve as a buffer, which creates more operational problems. So it wasn't going to be profitable for them and they want out. So they informed us that, they haven't said they want out in so many terms. What, what they've said is that they are, they're starting negotiations with FERC, which is a requirement to, to either to re-up the FERC license, which is federal energy required rulings, and either to re-up it or to cancel it. So they have to negotiate this, they can't just walk away. They have, and it takes eight years. So they are starting that negotiation, they have to bring us to the table. So they can't do it anything before 2037 because, because we're a partner. But I, I, I think we know what they want to do because they can't make money out. They're, they're making a very small amount of money, but it's not profitable to the point where there's so much risk. If anything changes, they will, they'll be losing money, so.
So with that being said, are we making any money on this because of our ownership status?
Nothing.
Is any money coming out of our treasury to fund operations?
That was part of our agreement in 95, was that they took over sole responsibility for operation and maintenance because it was costing us so much money back then. I wasn't here back then, but, but I read the emails and the documents and the letters. And it sounded like they, they had the ability to charge like 60% of all the operation and maintenance back to the city while we own the dam and they were just operating the hydroelectric. So we tried to get out of it. And we got out of it for about 40 years.
Has the council made any movement on this homeless situation down on State Street and elsewhere in the community?
Yeah, we, we have a homeless response committee that has been put together. And we've made some, some, we've inched our way towards some improvements, I would say, and to better manage the issue. We just received, we had our meeting yesterday, we received reports yesterday from one of our behavioral crisis responders. She said that she's seeing new faces down there. She's seeing that there's possibly people coming up from California to be up here as a result of displacement. So I also had a meeting last week with the county commissioners and trying to form a partnership with them. The county receives funds that could potentially be used for homelessness. And the city, you know, I, I wanted to represent the city and let them know that we would love to partner with them to provide a shelter of some sort. So it's, it's, we're kind of mending a relationship there. And, and trying, and so I think we have a good plan in place. A legislative session will be going, will be back in, in January. And so I think the homeless response committee would like to be more involved up in Olympia to let, to be included in any kind of capital funds that might go forward. So I think that your city council will be lobbying this year on the Hill and, and we'll be engaging representative, state representatives, see if we can bring some state funds to Aberdeen for a homeless shelter.
I think it would be rather redundant on my part to say that you're not trying, but you need to try harder because the taxpayers are really up to here with what's going on. And there's a lot of individual cases, many, many individual cases where these people show their strengths during the night. And the thievery and the damage and the preparations made by many businesses in this town is unbelievable. And it's all to deter this homelessness. So a stronger movement would really be appreciated by the taxpayers. Thank you very much for all which is.
Anyone else? Do you none? Move to good of the order, anyone on the council, Councilmember Ellis?
This coming Saturday, the dispute resolution center is holding one of the first of many Riverside chats. This one will take place in Cosmopolis at the Lions Club from 10:00 AM to noon. And it's to start a community conversation about what makes, what makes a livable, rewarding community? And how can we, can we work together to build community and improve relationships just at the, at the neighbor level or the person-to-person level? There will be another conversation that will be coming to Aberdeen later in 2024. You don't need to be from Cosmopolis or anywhere. Everyone is invited to any and all of these. And the facilitators are just really, really good. And and I know I've walked away from having conversations with people that were very deep and meaningful and helped me to better understand other, where, where people are coming from who have differing views and values. And so I encourage anyone who's available this Saturday to check it out. I'll be there this Saturday. Oh, the night, that's right.
Don't go this Saturday.
Do Saturdays.
Okay, anyone else? What was I gonna say? Well, now I lost it. Yeah.
Winter Fest is this weekend. Shop with them.
Good stuff. Okay, anyone else?
Is there a pet parade? I remember reading about it somewhere, but then I didn't see anything else. I think it's somewhere, uh, okay.
Next council meeting is the 13th. And I'll be out of state. So Council President Catman will be in charge. And then the following council meeting, I believe, is the 29th. Or the 20th, okay. And we're trying to coordinate with the county to swear in all the new council members and mayor. Okay. With that. Most of us made the second to adjourn. There's no objection, I will adjourn the meeting.